Good evening. I call to order this regular joint meeting of the Minnehaha County and Sioux Falls Planning Commissions, and I will begin with a few introductory comments. I am Bonnie Duffy. I am the Chair of the County Planning Commission, and Janet Kettens is here tonight for the City Planning Commission. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that all cellphones are turned off. Please note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on the www minnehaha county.org site for viewing by the general public. The two planning commissions work together on land use and zoning matters within the rural areas surrounding the city. This area is displaced on the screen. When this joint hearing is completed, the Joint Sioux Falls and County Planning Commission will adjourn, and the next regular business meeting will begin to consider items beyond the joint zoning jurisdiction within Sioux Falls. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the planning office by Monday, May 2nd at 5:00 PM. In the event of the appeal, in the event of an appeal, the decision will refer to the County Commission and the City Council for a joint hearing on Tuesday, May 24th, at or after 5:00 PM. That meeting is held in Carnegie Down Hall at 235 West 10th Street. First on the agenda is public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda?
Which item? That's a county item? Yeah, this is his joint city code. It's next meeting. Be aware of hearing on that.
Next meeting.
Okay, at this time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are perceived to be non-controversial and meet all of the requirements of the codes and regulations. The consent agenda will be acted on in one motion with no public hearing on the items unless a member of the public, the commission, or staff requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. The minutes for the March 28th meeting are included in the consent agenda. Does any Planning Commission member wish to have an item removed for discussion? Next, I'll read each item on the consent agenda and ask if there are any issues or comments from the staff or the audience. If any member of the staff or the audience would like to be heard on the item, please raise your hand, and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. Any items remaining on the consent agenda will be approved by the Planning Commission with the conditions recommended by the staff. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the March 28th, 2022, meeting. Item number two is Conditional Use Permit 22-34 to allow a temporary fireworks sales on the property legally described as Whitrock Track 1, and there's an exception of East 30 Feet, the Northwest Quarter, and Section 22 Township 101 North, Range 50 West. That is in Wayne Township. The petitioner is Mike Denning. Property owner is Swearinger Properties LLC. That is at the southeast corner of the South Ellis Road and the West 12th Street intersection.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion as second on the county side to approve the consent agendas, items number one and number two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes on the county side.
Right, on the city side, they've approved the consent agenda. Do we have a motion on the city's side to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor, please respond with yes.
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 If your item was approved on the consent agenda, you are free to go.
We'll move on to the regular agenda. Item number three is Conditional Use Permit 22-36 to amend Conditional Use Permit 21-33 to allow for a short-term exception to the condition requiring a fire suppression system on the property legally described as Track 4, Lots 5 and 6, Pleasant View Acres, the north half, southeast quarter, and the south half, the northeast quarter, Section 19 Township 101 North, Range 48 West. That is in Split Rock Township. Petitioner is Explosive Ventures LLC. Property owner, Todd Voss. It is at 7401 East Arrowhead Parkway. Kevin?
Good evening. I'm Kevin Hookman from the County Planning Department. This item is an amendment to a Conditional Use Permit that was approved last year. The Conditional Use Permit was approved for fireworks sale during the nine-day in-state fireworks sale season. It was approved with 14 conditions. This amendment specifically is requesting a change of Condition Number 11 that requires a fire suppression system for the building in order to operate. At the time of the approval, there was an expectation that the water would be available from the city of Sioux Falls Water and Sewer in the 2021 building season. The water never did come in that timeframe, and now the expectation for that water to be available to the property is in the summer of 2023, and that can be either before or after the fireworks season. So the potential is another two more years of no water in the building. The petitioner has submitted a detailed narrative along with his plant, with this request, and a recommendation from a sprinkler installation company on some options of what he would like to see. The letter, I'll highlight, that the letter brings up three options. The option one is to open the building. It's discussing that there's lots of egress. Option two is to the train fire spotter, oh, excuse me. Yeah, the train fire spotter is on the, be operating in the building while it's occupied. And then option three is the added supply, cost of adding a tank and water supplies for the building, which is a lot. Staff hasn't reviewed this with the Minnehaha County Building Inspector, and the building inspector has informed staff that he cannot issue occupancy for the building without the water sewer and required fire suppression system. And I will acknowledge that this is kind of an unusual situation where water was stated to be coming. There was, for that first year, our planning department allowed the petitioner to occupy the building for the nine days of fireworks sales with kind of the good faith effort that water will be coming, and it never came. And we decided that it would be needed to amend the order, or amend the permit for the, these next two years going forward. The staff has a preferred option that the fireworks sales be done in a temporary tent outside the building. This preferred option by staff is in part because the petitioner used this as an, as an backup option in his permit last year. He said, included a, a site plan for where a tent would go and porta-potties for in the event that water was not available as a contingency. And considering that that is an option that has been planned for in the original permit, staff does find that that option could be done without amending the permit, and he can continue sales on the property with that tent until water's available and the building can be occupied. And so staff has recommended denial of the conditional use permit request for, or the amendment. And I'll just show you just a couple photos of the property from earlier this year. The building is up. Everything appears to be completed except for the, the water. You'll see that across the street, there is the open area that's now going to be soon developed, and you can see the driveways there. There's another view of the driveway. And then, at this time, the, the building in the back was a storage building under construction, and I, I'm, I think that, that building is either complete or very close to complete since this photo was taken. So I'll bring it back to the location map, and I am here for any questions.
All right.
Kevin, is the water, the issue with the water, just that Arrowhead Parkway isn't done yet?
I think that's a big part of it, is that the delay in finishing Arrowhead Parkway has delayed when water is going to come. The petitioner explained, or the, one of the letters explains that the first thing will be done is a sewer will be extended through the area, and then likely it would be the next year that water will be extended through with the road construction.
So that, that's something where it's the city's fault for not getting it there, is what, kind of?
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions for him?
I have a question, Madam Chair. Given the fact that the inspector says he cannot issue a permit without the fire suppression system, I'd imagine the answer to this is no. But are we aware of any instances in the county or elsewhere where there's any fireworks operations indoors without the system?
You are correct that, I would venture a guess that all of them in the county that are indoors are currently not sprinkled. Many of the fireworks indoors are, in the Minnehaha County have been constructed prior to our current ordinance even, prior to the 1990 ordinance, and have remained that way. There is, has been a couple alter, alterations to one building and one that is temporary sales in like a barn that is just for the nine days that was allowed in, I think it was 2014 was the first permit for that one.
I guess I got another question. So if, if can't give the building permit, say we approve this, he still can't occupy the building, correct?
Correct. He wouldn't be able to occupy the building until the fire suppression is there.
Kevin?
Yeah?
Going back to the last question, so they would have to do business in a tent?
Yes, that would be the expectation. If they would, if they were going to sell fireworks from the property, they'd put up a tent and have porta-potties available.
Could they store the, the fireworks before they were brought out for sale in the building?
No, they cannot.
Any other questions for him? Guess not. Is the petitioner here? Will you please come forward?
Hello, TJ Cameron of Explosive Ventures, 2821 East Daybreak Circle in Brandon, South Dakota. Thanks for hearing us tonight, and trying to keep my notes fairly bulleted for respect of your time and the length of the approval prior. However, for out of respect, I want to answer any questions you have. So I'll keep my, my comments fairly brief, but totally available for questions. Just a quick recap of, of what got us here. Originally, when we purchased this property, we had six different phone calls to the county inquiring, and we were told on all occasions that we wouldn't even need a conditional use permit originally. That was during our due diligence period, or we would have probably not closed on the property. Thank goodness to this commission that, that Scott and, Scott and Kevin had reached out and said that actually there was a little bit of a misreading in the verbiage. And they did explain that, and that we would need to get a conditional use permit. We had already closed on the property and engaged in hiring engineers and construction and contractors, and we had originally requested to be open from May 31st through August 31st, or May 1st through August 31st for the full year season, but we had conceded that request at the meeting where this commission actually approved us to sell for the nine-day season, which, as you can see from the pictures, and you should have more pictures in your original packet, and if you don't, I brought copies of those that show more photos of the constructed building behind that we've since completed, as well as on the proximity to the Split Rock Fire Department, which is less than about five, well, probably, it's definitely less than 1,000 square feet because we had to mail them letters notifying them of us coming for this conditional use permit in both occurrences. And I, if I were to estimate, not being an expert, I'd say about 500 feet away or so. And we have spoken to that fire chief, both prior and now Chief Joe. Not only did we concede on requesting the dates and just went to the short season to not cause confusion for the rules for the Sioux Falls residents, but we also voluntarily offered for a, this fire suppression system. I did bring a copy, and I don't believe this is in your initial notes, but if you'd like a copy, I have it here. And this was our initial code review from our architecture firm called, in Brookings, Design Arc in Brookings. And the original notes, which I could pass this around, or you can all have a copy, indicated that the conversations would be that we would not be required to even have a sprinkler system because there wasn't water available. We only can have Minnehaha County, which had a two-inch water main available. So the original code review, our architect was told that that could be passed on, and in the notes, it specifically says, pre, or fire suppression system. An automatic fire suppression system is not required. See notes to reviewer, note to reviewer, sprinkler and fire system. A full NFPA 13 fire suppression system is required per 2018 IBC rules, but due to inadequate water line size available to the site, the county of Minnehaha County is not requiring a fire suppression system be provided in this building. However, when we came to the commission, we voluntarily, including our attorney, Reese, who's here tonight, also suggested voluntarily offering the fire suppression system. And we did have a letter, which is in the packet. If you want to see this, I have these available. But otherwise, in the packet, we had reached out to the city, and they gave us that letter saying that they would bring us water and sewer so we wouldn't have to do a septic system, which we thought was responsible as well, to hook up to the water and sewer. Then voluntarily said we'd put in the fire suppression system. That letter that is in your packet states that they would bring us water 20, by 2021. We actually installed the fire suppression system, you know, ranging, I, I would probably need my partner to help me with the exact amount, but I think it was $50,000 plus to put that in. It's there, and there should be pictures in your packet that I included of that completed fire suppression system. The only thing we're waiting for is the water. So I had reached out to Scott, and Scott was very accommodating last year, allowing us to operate, and said, what, what, what do we need to do? And he indicated, as Kevin said, come here today and explain what happened. I think we've, you know, gone well above and beyond the amount of expense required to try to be a responsible fireworks store. And I did some research, and I know I could come up with more, but verifiable, I could tell you there's 19. And I say 19 because that's the ones I could think of, as I was writing them on a list just from me traveling South Dakota. So 19-plus permanent structures in South Dakota. I spoke to the state fire marshal in trying to research if any of them had a fire suppression system. He could recall one that has one, and it's over 12,000 square feet. And maybe, and he couldn't say with certainty, he thought he recalled one other one. I have not been in one in South Dakota that has a fire suppression system anywhere in South Dakota. In addition to that, there must be 100-plus tents operated in South Dakota. That's an assumption. I didn't count those, but I did count the permanent structures. If the, if the IBC rules require any structure over 1,000 square feet and over 125 pounds of explosive material, which as you saw from the city's recommendation would be 500 pounds of weight of fireworks, then any tent over 20 by 50, which there's a lot of them, that'd be 1,000 square feet, could theoretically be required to have a sprinkler system in them. That'd be about one pallet of fireworks, or about 20 cases at 40 to 50 pounds per box. So there's exceedingly more than that. Our tents that we have and operate in, in multiple counties in South Dakota probably have 20 pallets of fireworks. So that's just, I'm just bringing that to your attention as far as the relativity of the, the request and the responsibility. Just a moment ago, you approved a, a tent that nobody even asked the square footage, nor did the county bring up the requirements of the 1,000 square feet or the weight of fireworks before a fire suppression system is required. I think that's important to note. A couple things about a tent versus a building. It's a controlled environment. We know what goes in and out of the doors of the fireworks store. You know, a tent, we have multiple, so I don't want to degrade tents, but my partner is an avid believer of having permanent buildings for the safety and security of the building and longevity. But it's a controlled environment. Things such as sparks, smokers that drive by, dispensaries that are right down the road from us, as you know, coming up, which also have smokers, and the wind that we've been experiencing. Should a fire take place in a tent, it's going, I mean, I'm not a fire expert, not claiming to be either, but I know that wind spreads, spreads fire, and a fire in a tent would, would expand way faster than a fire in a building. Plus, it's a very less controlled building. So I don't want to take that opportunity away from us, but when I did suggest that in the first attempt to get the conditional use permit, that we could operate out of a tent, we wouldn't have invested over 1.2, and I think it's approaching 1.5 million dollars into the building, to rely on nine days worth of fireworks sales. And it would be financially catastrophic if we have to move out to a tent. A tent, just to give you some percentages, not to disclose all of our business secrets, but I'm willing to do so if you ask me to. We projected that we would do about 100% over last year's sales, and a tent would do less than 50% of last year's sales if we're required to operate in a tent in the parking lot. As far as storage, we could easily move the fireworks, but it's a controlled environment. There's HVAC. We know what goes in and out. There's only people nine days in the building, maybe 10, and employees for another month before and month after. With that kind of access, if you look at our building plan, which I can also provide, I have copies here, you're no less, no less than 25 feet from a fire exit at any time because the whole building is 54 feet. There's a fire exit no less than about 30 feet apart, or, I'm sorry, about 50 feet apart from each other, all around the perimeter. So if you're standing in the middle of the building, not to mention that these aisles are five-plus feet wide in every single aisle, and a tent, in multiple of our own tents and other tents, the aisles are two to three feet. In a tent that's 40 feet long, if you're at one end of the building, and there's a fire, and there's tables all around the exterior, you're running 40 feet to get to an exit in a tent. Where in our building, you're no less than 25 feet from a fire exit at any time. We're definitely willing to, you know, do a fire safety watch person. Unfortunately, our, Kyler had planned to be here tonight but couldn't make it, but he did provide that letter. He did say in a conversation with us that, that that plan of the fire watch person is feasible, and we're willing to do that. Also, we'd be willing to put in extra fire extinguishers, whatever necessary. However, he said usually they do fire watch when there's corridors and other things that you have to go through first before you lead to a fire exit, where ours is a rectangle building, and you're no more than 25 feet from an exit at any time. The code compliance officer, from my research of the CBI codes, a code compliance officer does actually have the authority, and hopefully you could ask your attorney if this is true, to forego the requirement altogether. And again, as I read in our original code review, that was actually initially considered until we offered to hook up to the city water, and we've put in that sprinkler system. The, let's see, the, the letter stated 2021. As Kevin indicated, I had reached out in the middle of this, you know, just a couple of months ago, wondering what was happening, and it said it could be in phase two of this upcoming project, which sewer is going in in phase one, which would be next year, but water ironically isn't going until phase two, which is true. It could be 2023. So we're not asking to forego the requirement. We're just asking that we be allowed to connect when it's available to us. We are in this, in the plan. I spoke to the engineer, and the engineer said that our plan is to be hooked up to a fire hydrant, five-inch main that's going to be located, and we'll be responsible for getting our line to that main, but we're actually in their design plan. Our building is in the design plan based on that letter that we got, allowing us to hook up to their water. So it's definitely a long-term plan, and we'd be willing to connect as soon as feasibly possible. But we've also conceded that 30% of our building that was supposed to be rented to a tenant will probably remain vacant for the next two years, and that's also a huge financial burden. But we are, are aware of that, and if we have to, we're willing to, you know, concede that. But we really need these sales to make our business work. As far as the one comment regarding, I think somebody had asked, could we occupy it or not? Well, that Condition 11 says that we need it in order to get the occupancy, but we're asking for this commission to allow us to have the occupancy without that condition, and we will hook up as soon as reasonably possible, as soon as it's available to us. Any questions for me?
Madam Chair?
Jeff?
Will there be any limits on occupancy before you have the water hookup? I mean, if you've got 300 people in the place, it's more difficult to get out than if there are six of you.
I'd say that's accurate, but we haven't been asked about any specific occupancy requirements. But, I mean, we, we could probably, part of the fire watch, you know, keep a, I don't know even, I don't even know what our occupancy number will be, but I imagine in a 6,700 square foot space, it's going to be quite large. But I don't think we'd have any problems if we needed to have our fire watch person limit us to 100 people in the building at a time. I mean, I know it's a short season, but even in a very short season, 100 people is a lot of people. We want to be reasonable and flexible and...
Question, Jeff? Questions for him?
I have a question, Madam Chair. Did you say you're going to have a fire watch?
We are willing to do that. It's, it was the recommendation of our sprinkler installation company. They made the three possible recommendations. The one was let us operate as is, and it's in your, your letters in your packet. The second one was to require a fire watch person that has to sign off, and we trained them through a safety program. They said they would help us do that. And then they'd have to also sign off on the, on the fire watch training every so many hours, and he said he would help facilitate that training. And I don't want to misquote how often they have to sign off, but we said we would definitely be willing to do that if, if that would make the commission feel more comfortable.
Any other questions for him? It's not at this time.
Reese, did you have anything to add? This is Reese. He's our, our attorney that's here with us tonight. Thank you so much.
Please state your name and address, sir.
Reese Solomon. I'm an attorney with the Davenport Evans Law Firm here in Sioux Falls, 206 West 14th Street. And I want to just briefly, I think TJ did a wonderful job summarizing all the kind of facts and the circumstances that exist in terms of why they're here seeking this temporary relief from this commission. I guess I just want to come here and remind you guys that you have the discretion, you have the authority to provide this temporary relief. It's no different than a variance from zoning ordinances. This is just a, a brief time period amendment to this conditional use permit that was already issued by, by this joint commission. So I just wanted to remind you all that you guys have the authority of the discretion here to make this short-term limited exception to what I'm hearing is a building code requirement. So with, with that said, you've heard all the reasons from TJ about the circumstances that, that led us here tonight, the investment that, that entity made into this project working with the city and county and their officials, and the, really the steps they're taking to try to make a very safe fireworks stand here. All the reasons why the, the hard-surfaced walled permanent structure would actually be more safe than a tent, for all the reasons that TJ talked about. It's very close to a, a fire department. You're not going to have those outside disturbances, either from the wind or sparks from exhaust or what have you. So with that said, I would just ask that you guys use your discretion, use your authority, and then grant this temporary amendment to the conditional use permit that you guys previously issued for this project. So thank you.
Kyler was able to make it from our sprinkler suppression system company, and he's here. Should you like him to recap any of the points or answer any questions about the fire watch committee or, or individual?
State your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Kyler Bauma. 2916 South Key Rail, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I'm an owner and service first fire sprinkler. Been for a couple of years, been doing it for a little over 10 years. I guess you kind of went over most of the stuff in my letter. Do you guys have any questions I can help with?
Any questions for him? I guess not. We, we did receive a letter to pack- We did receive a letter to packets, so.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Anyone in the audience care to speak to this item? Okay, I'm going to close the floor. Commissioners? Jeff?
Well, I tell you, I'd sort of like to see it in a joint meeting with the city and see what the city council has to say about the lack of water at this location, but I do think that it's, this is a difficult situation. I mean, it's not a happy thing to have it go forward without full protection. Anecdotally, I can't think of any fireworks stands that are blown up in this state. There's plenty of fireworks being blown up at people's houses and stuff. I don't know, I'm listening to the rest of you.
Madam Chair, I have a question for Kevin.
Kevin, can we come forward, please?
What's different this year than last year?
For why we allowed them to temporarily occupy last year? I would say that last year, we allowed them based on it being one year and the close proximity to the water, everybody was expecting it to be there soon. This year, we have two more years would be the difference of why we wanted this conditional use permit before, to make the decision rather than us just letting them have that extra two years with administrative permission.
But it seems like the conditions are the same, in terms of the inability to access the water. Is that right?
What do you mean?
Well, they can't hook up their water, or their suppression system because they don't have access to water, which was the case last year.
Yep.
So I'm the, I guess I'm the culprit that allowed them to operate last year, and TJ and I had a discussion. It was, it appeared, it appeared to me that, on the information that I had and TJ, that the water would be, I won't say imminently installed, but it was to be installed. TJ asked if it would be possible for them to operate, knowing that we had just last April approved the condition, there wasn't enough time to turn around to come back when we knew there wasn't going to be water, to have it amended. So I indicated it would be okay for the business to continue. So fast forward now to March, TJ called me again and said, well, you know, we're not going to be able to have a sprinkler system because the water's not going to be there. And at that point, I said, I think that we're at the point now where I think we need to bring it back to the planning commission, and we all have a discussion. Not that I was opposed to having the conditional use permit there, and it was approved last year, but TJ indicated that they had constructed the sprinkler system, it's there, he showed me pictures. So I think that he's done what he needs to do to meet the intent of the conditional use permit. So we talked about, maybe the best course of action would be bring it back to the planning commission and potentially amend the conditions to allow it or not allow it, but we'd have that discussion. Now, I think he's proposing that, you know, there would be a fire watch, maybe additional fire suppression or fire extinguishers, those might be options you want to consider. But then it's not back on me, because I didn't feel comfortable saying now three years is more than I thought would be imminently coming down the road, so. Because we both found out that it's going to be more than what we had expected, and that, you know, projects get pushed back and things change, so that's why we're having the discussion.
Madam Chair.
Larry.
Can I have Reese come up? Reese, what would you like changed on the conditions? I mean, to meet what you guys are kind of wanting to do here, what would you recommend that to look at?
Let me pull out the prior conditions, so I have the number right. Really what we're talking about is the condition 11 that was put on this project back in 2021, and that condition states a fire suppression system which meets the adopted building code must be installed within the building. And really, that system has been installed, it's just, as you heard, it hasn't been hooked up to water yet for reasons outside of the applicant's control. So I guess the tweak would be that maybe some additional language to this condition 11 that says, you know, for, it does not need to have access to water until water is available, which hopefully will be in summer of 2023, hopefully before fireworks season in 2023. So that really all we're talking about here is a one-year exception to this condition. And for that temporary exception, as you've heard from TJ, he's happy to do the fire watch person to increase fire extinguishers on-site and other temporary fire suppression-type devices, which I'm not aware of because I'm not a fireperson, but I'm sure there's perhaps some other fire suppression things aside from fire extinguishers that they could look into. I'm being told that tents are required to have two fire extinguishers on-site, and they're happy to have more than that to satisfy this joint commission, that would put any concerns to rest. So what specific language we're looking for, I guess, I didn't answer your question very well.
No, it helped.
I think I understand.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for him?
This is for TJ or his party, his team, but what does this do to your insurance not having fire suppression equipment there?
So we have insurance, which covers the liability of our product, the building, the inventory, the property itself, and in a lot of our tent operations, and this is something that maybe the commission isn't aware of, but in a lot of, South Dakota doesn't require tents to have any kind of liability coverage, nor does it require anybody to have any insurance coverage at all from a legal standpoint. Landowners often ask for that, but many tents have on-premise liability only, meaning, and by the way, I own Central State's Insurance, so I am a licensed insurance agent, and I own the company. I do not carry our own insurance policy. It's through an insurance carrier that specializes in fireworks stores, and they're out of Nebraska, Rosenbacher or something, I can't remember the name exactly, but I could refer to my notes. We do have end-to-end coverage on our product, including coverage for products that we label under our own brand called Pyroholic, which is something we import direct and put our own label on, part of the manufacturing process. We have end-to-end coverage of insurance. They don't require the fire suppression system, they do require certain number of fire alarms and surveillance 24 hours, et cetera. But many tents, and including, prior to this year, including some of our own, now our tents are covered on end-to-end liability. But some tents don't require, just have, like, if somebody slips and falls on the property, but if they get hurt by the fireworks, there's no coverage for that operator, and we have end-to-end coverage now in this building and all of our tents. But many tents only have, if the landlord requires it, if somebody slips and falls, but it doesn't even require, it doesn't even cover if somebody gets hurt with the fireworks.
Any other questions for them?
Madam Chair, I just have one question for you, Scott or Kim, if I may.
Go ahead.
Just to confirm, this last condition we put on here as a council, this wasn't a code requirement by the building, so the number 11 is something that this body really added to it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else care to speak to this item?
Madam Chair, I have another question. It's probably an unfair question for Fletcher, since I don't think he was employed by the city yet at this time. My memory, and it may be appropriate for Kevin as well, whoever can best answer, my memory serves me, it may serve me incorrect here, was the original recommendation from the city to deny the conditional use permit, and could somebody speak as to why that was?
I believe that, or Fletcher Lakeocker, I'm the planner with the city of Sioux Falls Planning Department. Planning's department's policy would be that a property using city services be annexed into the city, so that would be our preference. But it appears that Public Works made a other decision to allow them to hook up to water and sewer without annexing it into the city. The issue being, if they annexed into the city, they couldn't do fireworks, so.
Yep. Is that fairly common? Do we see that very often?
As far as...
Binding services outside of the city.
It does happen, it probably shouldn't, because then it interferes with the city's growth area and our ability to expand, so, when, where needed.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
So I'm going to throw this out here for number 11, is maybe us extending that to 2023, then of 2023, to have that system fully operational. I think that basically, you know, I know that a lot of the land deals on that have been hard to acquire, and some people have been fun, so I think that he's done, the applicant's done everything we've asked him to, and he's just not able to hook up. So that is one thing that I would propose. Madam Chair, just to piggyback off that a little bit too, you know, understand this isn't a code requirement, it's not anything that, you know, building officials say we need, NFPA, any of these hierarchies, this is some of this board kind of put on there as maybe something to satisfy the...
I think the neighbors.
Concerns at the time. You know, I would kind of agree. I think that they have gone above and beyond what they would be required in any other jurisdiction by building code. So I don't know why, you know, putting something on there to say by December 31st, 2023, they have to have it connected. Give them two years to come back, I don't think we need to waste your time coming back, but the line's not in there by, you know, May next year, why, I don't think we need to go through this process again, but finding that leeway a little bit, I think is reasonable.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else in the audience care to speak to this item?
Madam Chair, so what would we want to do to take it off for two years or a year and a half? Do we just, do they have to come back after they get hooked up with water, or do we just give them a pass until they are?
Kevin, do you have an answer to that, please?
As Mike said, if you have a condition, or change the condition that it's required to be hooked up by December 2023, if he hooks up anytime before that date, then he continues with his operation, he doesn't have to come back here again.
Does that answer your question? Jeff? Okay.
So what's our verbiage then? We just put, connected by 2023?
Probably December, December 31st.
Yeah.
He added to that number 11 then? Okay.
At the end, tack on, installed by December 31st, 2023.
That would be my motion to amend.
One second.
Okay, I have a motion in second. Any further discussion on the county side? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes on the county side.
Okay, on the city side, the county has approved with a change to number 11 on the condition, that the fire suppression system be installed by December 31st, 2023. Do we have a motion on our side?
Motion to, go ahead, Larry. Motion to approve the change to item 11 in the conditional use permit.
Second.
Further discussion?
I just want to say again, I mean, you've done everything we've asked you to, and I just feel that we're not able to adequately get you what you need, and I feel that basically this commission doing, you know, the right thing and making it where you can operate. I would just leave it up to you to basically take advantage of having extra fire extinguishers and stuff that you make it feel safe there, so.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor with the condition that we've put before us, please respond with yes.
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
So do we need a motion to approve it as amended?
You amended it with the conditions.
By changing it, yeah. Any old business, Scott? Any new?
I think you're right. I think you're right, since we amended it, we have to...
Okay, we'll just take a second. I make a motion to approve permit 22-36 as amended, as amended.
One second.
Okay, I have a motion in second to approve 22-36 to, as to the amendment of the conditional use permit. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes on the county side.
Okay, we have a motion on the county side. Do we want to have a motion on the city side that mirrors that? Do I have a motion?
Second.
Right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please respond with yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries.
Nothing else, okay? I'll take a motion to adjourn on the county side.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned on the county side.
All right, we have a motion on our side to adjourn.
Make a motion, adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn.